Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to say before we do our pledge allegiance, there's some time for reflection. Fifteen years ago, 9/11 happened yesterday, and just remember the tragic of this thing. Also, I'm sure if you remember the people that has been affected by Hurricanes Harvey and Hurricane Irma, as they need our prayers and our help today. Also, we don't have two council members here tonight. Councilman Murray is out sick and has major surgery tomorrow, and Dr. Kagan is out sick too. Also, we want to remember Chris Brown and Wicked Slope and his mother, and just keep them. But in honor, honor America, that's proud, to stand in the sacred pledge allegiance. Josh Roberts, with the first name, fire department, for the communication.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Josh.
The most kind message I have to say to my father is we come before you tonight. We pray that you'll watch care of me over all of us. We pray for those that have been affected by storms. We pray for you to be with our first responders as they respond and help those in need. The volunteers, Lord, that are willing to give up their time and energy to help those people. And we pray that you'll be with those people, Lord, that you'll help with their hearts, and you'll show them that with faith in you, that things will get better. We pray for our troops, both at home and abroad, Lord, that you'll be with them as they protect the freedom that gives us the opportunity to assemble here tonight. We pray that you'll be with leaders, both here and in Washington, Lord, that you'll watch care of me over them, that you'll grant them wisdom and knowledge to do the things and make the decisions that, Lord, that will make all of our lives better. These things we ask in your son's precious and holy name. Amen.
First on agenda tonight is a special presentation for the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We have a proclamation. I've asked Dr. Brown to read the proclamation, and Jill and Zach, come forward.
Amy, but I can. Thank you, Josh, for being here. The Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas the health and safety of all people of Tassle County is essential to the happiness and well-being of the county's families and communities, and whereas childhood cancer affects one out of every 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year, and one in five of those diagnosed does not survive, and whereas this tragic disease is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15, and whereas when a child is diagnosed with cancer, it devastates their family, and the unexpected cost of treatment can become overwhelming, and whereas the determination and bravery with which these children fight their battles against cancer should be recognized and commended by all, and whereas the TJ Rasmick Foundation and other community organizations will hold events in honor, memory, and recognition of these children, and whereas it is vital that those affected by childhood cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and that research of all forms of childhood cancer continues to be vigorously supported. Now therefore, may Mayor Aiden Donald McFadden Jr. hereby recognize September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Tassle, Virginia, and on this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, adopt it this 12th day of September 2017.
May I present this to you, Chris Brown? Chris.
There you go. Perfect.
Hang on a second.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, yes, good.
There you go.
Adder is dead, John. That's about it. Thank you. Thank you. See you later. They have a candlelight ritual, 7:00 at the hospital. At the football field or in front of?
Not from the hospital.
In front of the hospital.
13:00 at 7:00. I'll see you there.
I'll be there. Next on agenda is the Tassle County Historical Society. Thank you, Chris, for bringing that.
Absolutely.
I'm Susan Reeves, here on campus of the Tassle County Public Society. And on August 21st, we held an event on Main Street here in Tassle to commemorate the Great American Eclipse. We had an original photo taken in May 28, 1900, so we wanted to do a modern spin on the photo. And to thank the town for its efforts in helping us with the day, close the street, and participation, we wanted to present a photo of our photo. And we also have a calendar that we have put together. We wanted to make a presentation.
I'd love these ladies to come up, please. Cheers. Thank you. This picture has been all right for that big old ugly guy like Camille, holding up something else in her hair. I don't know if you've seen it or not. We'll give that to Todd. Thank you, Steve, very much. I really do owe that. Hope everybody else did, too.
They also have copies of the actions available if anyone's interested.
Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes. We have a work session, a council meeting for August 8. And Brad, you have a amendment to that?
With regard to the Charter Communications vote that was held in regard to the franchise. It was reported in the minutes strictly as an extension of the term, three years. If you'll go back and look specific, I know from my notes, the actual vote was on the three-year extension along with the amendments that we discussed. It has not reflected in your amendment specifically. I think the amendments need to be amended to reflect those amendments that were requested by Charter and also the town's request that it be a three-year as opposed to a 20-year extension. They were requested, actually, a 20 or at least a 10-year minimum. You voted on a three-year extension along with the amendments we've taken.
Okay, we'll take a vote on the amendment first and then we'll approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion to adopt the amended minutes? Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
My second.
Okay. Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Can I just, one question about that. No, they were going to cut out giving services to the schools? They went from, yes, they had, one of the amendments they had was extended basic down to basic, and that was one of the concerns you all had. What you voted on wasn't that, I specifically asked this. If you go back, if you were going to allow for those amendments to occur, but only on a three-year basis, and that was what you did vote on last time. So they get, they get, the schools get the same service as the town does? No. It doesn't? No, it does not. Their amendments, they're going, what their talk was, again, you've made for Mr. Tank to specify, that there was not going to be any significant change. They were going to label it. They were going to label it as basic, not extended basic. Keep the same services. And then they were going to go and transition over to digital. But there was the language, which that you all had agreed to at that point in time, was for the amendments to go through as they had proposed, and but only on a three-year term. I'll throw that, have you already? Do you have a? I'll let you have your, to give vote, and I'll have another comment back and forth.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. I thought that we voted just to extend the contract for three years as it was. I thought that was the final word that we had in that meeting.
If you go back and you watch, and Robert and I specifically looked at this relative to our amendments that ended the meeting from last month, I specifically asked, are you approving the amendments that Charter had suggested as well? And you all acknowledged that you were.
Well, that's basically why I was hesitant in seconding it, because I was thinking the same thing.
I thought it was three years to 2019. That's when they go digital.
2020, actually, 17 to 20.
I think you told me 2019.
Is that recent? Three years.
I haven't been in contact with you, just for information purposes, to the ABC station, and they tell me that they're broadcasting in HD and in spectrum. And in fact, they even told me this week that spectrum would be correcting it and let me know if it was corrected at 9, of course, that's 3, 3, 4 nights we have, and it's not correct. But Charter Communications is not paying attention. I don't want to do that.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, at this point, you know, you're, just to, I get to clarify, at this point, the procedure in the meeting is a favorite correction of those minutes.
We've already voted to pass.
You have, and you voted last month to do that.
I wasn't there.
But our minutes did not reflect what you actually did. And I went back and checked, and sure enough, it's in, it's on video and audio, but for what you actually had approved, and the minutes that you had in front of you on paper do not reflect the same thing that's on video and in the session. And it was brought to my attention, and that's why I need to bring it to your office tonight. I'll, I'll go ahead and comment on this now, I know it's interesting, you've had the motion, but no second. Well, I'll wait. Do you have a second? One of the things I also stressed at the meeting, based on the Telecommunications Cable Act of 1984, that's, there's a three-year window that has to be afforded to any cable franchise operator in terms of whether or not there need to be public comments or receiving public comments about how the cable system can be upgraded or approved. One of the things that I discussed with Todd was that this amount, this three-year, is not any real coincidence. It's one where there's a 36-month time frame in which the town needs to direct, make available to the general public for comments on issues about Channel 4, or Channel 10, or the ABC affiliate, whatever things need to be improved in order to give then the cable company time to correct and address these issues over that 36-month period of time. This would also allow for, with this only being three years as opposed to a 10-year and greater extension, for the town to start looking and pursuing other alternatives for other possible franchises to come in and replace Charter.
There aren't yet.
Not yet. So that's one where I think it's where you have to start looking to see if there are any other possibilities out there to market yourself as a town, to say, we would like to have competitive bidding against our existing franchisee, which until, you know, last week was, it was Spectrum or Time Warner, now Charter, to see if there is a better mousetrap out there from somebody else to be able to provide your cable franchise service.
So this is just a formality you've got to go through now.
What you've already voted on, yes. I'm just trying to make sure we proceed to, we have on record what was voted on accurately.
Okay. Any other? If not, call for it. All in favor, say aye. Next is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes of August 8?
I believe that we approve the minutes as amended. I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comments on any other part? Not all in favor, say aye. Next is the special call meeting, August 17. Do I hear a motion to adopt those as presented?
Tell me.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comments? If you don't, all for vote, all in favor, say aye. Next on agenda is the financial report, Leanne.
I'm still trying to kind of fill out what you guys are looking for when I do a financial update. So if you all find that what I'm giving you all, your council packets, if it's too much, if it's not enough, tell me, so I'll know what to do with you guys. I've broke down in there what was spent, what we got in, water fund, sewer fund, general fund. I did get word last week that we'll be getting our tax dis from the county probably this week, so we'll start working on tax stuff as soon as we get back. Do you have any questions?
Within the fact that there was a financial for the minutes, so please look at that.
Yes, okay. Mayor, just to clarify, toward the vacuum of financials, is where Leanne has got the information that council has requested, such as canceled donations. They're in the financials anyway, but we just kind of highlighted them a little bit so they stand out. And also, an August financial recap, revenue expenditures and whatnot is also in there. So if there's anything else that council wants to see, we have, as the mayor said, reactivated the activities report, and as you can see, since April, I think, we're at $70,000, I wouldn't say $74,000, $70,295 since April 1st. And now keep in mind, that's donations, whether it's cash donations, or whether it's man hours or material. But just for the record, you know, when somebody says that the town council of Tassle does not support the community, community growth, I can heavily argue that. Okay? It's very transparent, it's right there in your, and you know, obviously, with the growth that we're having in the town of Tassle, that's a direct reflection of it. So, but anyway, if there's anything additional that you want, as Leanne said, just let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt those financial statements as presented?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Not call for a vote, all in favor, say aye. Next on agenda is the financial report, Leanne.
I'm still trying to kind of fill out what you guys are looking for when I do a financial update. So if you all find that what I'm giving you all, your council packets, if it's too much, if it's not enough, tell me, so I'll know what to do with you guys. I've broke down in there what was spent, what we got in, water fund, sewer fund, general fund. I did get word last week that we'll be getting our tax dis from the county probably this week, so we'll start working on tax stuff as soon as we get back. Do you have any questions?
Within the fact that there was a financial for the minutes, so please look at that.
Yes, okay. Mayor, just to clarify, toward the vacuum of financials, is where Leanne has got the information that council has requested, such as canceled donations. They're in the financials anyway, but we just kind of highlighted them a little bit so they stand out. And also, an August financial recap, revenue expenditures and whatnot is also in there. So if there's anything else that council wants to see, we have, as the mayor said, reactivated the activities report, and as you can see, since April, I think, we're at $70,000, I wouldn't say $74,000, $70,295 since April 1st. And now keep in mind, that's donations, whether it's cash donations, or whether it's man hours or material. But just for the record, you know, when somebody says that the town council of Tassle does not support the community, community growth, I can heavily argue that. Okay? It's very transparent, it's right there in your, and you know, obviously, with the growth that we're having in the town of Tassle, that's a direct reflection of it. So, but anyway, if there's anything additional that you want, as Leanne said, just let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt those financial statements as presented?
Motion.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Can I just, one question about that. No, they were going to cut out giving services to the schools?
They went from, yes, they had, one of the amendments they had was extended basic down to basic, and that was one of the concerns you all had. What you voted on wasn't that, I specifically asked this. If you go back, if you were going to allow for those amendments to occur, but only on a three-year basis, and that was what you did vote on last time.
So they get, they get, the schools get the same service as the town does?
No.
It doesn't?
No, it does not. Their amendments, they're going, what their talk was, again, you've made for Mr. Tank to specify, that there was not going to be any significant change. They were going to label it. They were going to label it as basic, not extended basic. Keep the same services. And then they were going to go and transition over to digital. But there was the language, which that you all had agreed to at that point in time, was for the amendments to go through as they had proposed, and but only on a three-year term.
Okay.
I'll throw that, have you already? Do you have a? I'll let you have your, to give vote, and I'll have another comment back and forth.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. I thought that we voted just to extend the contract for three years as it was. I thought that was the final word that we had in that meeting.
If you go back and you watch, and Robert and I specifically looked at this relative to our amendments that ended the meeting from last month, I specifically asked, are you approving the amendments that Charter had suggested as well? And you all acknowledged that you were.
Well, that's basically why I was hesitant in seconding it, because I was thinking the same thing.
I thought it was three years to 2019. That's when they go digital.
2020, actually, 17 to 20.
I think you told me 2019.
Is that recent?
Three years.
I haven't been in contact with you, just for information purposes, to the ABC station, and they tell me that they're broadcasting in HD and in spectrum. And in fact, they even told me this week that spectrum would be correcting it and let me know if it was corrected at 9, of course, that's 3, 3, 4 nights we have, and it's not correct. But Charter Communications is not paying attention. I don't want to do that.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, at this point, you know, you're, just to, I get to clarify, at this point, the procedure in the meeting is a favorite correction of those minutes.
We've already voted to pass.
You have, and you voted last month to do that.
I wasn't there.
But our minutes did not reflect what you actually did. And I went back and checked, and sure enough, it's in, it's on video and audio, but for what you actually had approved, and the minutes that you had in front of you on paper do not reflect the same thing that's on video and in the session. And it was brought to my attention, and that's why I need to bring it to your office tonight. I'll, I'll go ahead and comment on this now, I know it's interesting, you've had the motion, but no second. Well, I'll wait. Do you have a second? One of the things I also stressed at the meeting, based on the Telecommunications Cable Act of 1984, that's, there's a three-year window that has to be afforded to any cable franchise operator in terms of whether or not there need to be public comments or receiving public comments about how the cable system can be upgraded or approved. One of the things that I discussed with Todd was that this amount, this three-year, is not any real coincidence. It's one where there's a 36-month time frame in which the town needs to direct, make available to the general public for comments on issues about Channel 4, or Channel 10, or the ABC affiliate, whatever things need to be improved in order to give then the cable company time to correct and address these issues over that 36-month period of time. This would also allow for, with this only being three years as opposed to a 10-year and greater extension, for the town to start looking and pursuing other alternatives for other possible franchises to come in and replace Charter.
There aren't yet.
Not yet. So that's one where I think it's where you have to start looking to see if there are any other possibilities out there to market yourself as a town, to say, we would like to have competitive bidding against our existing franchisee, which until, you know, last week was, it was Spectrum or Time Warner, now Charter, to see if there is a better mousetrap out there from somebody else to be able to provide your cable franchise service.
So this is just a formality you've got to go through now.
What you've already voted on, yes. I'm just trying to make sure we proceed to, we have on record what was voted on accurately.
Okay. Any other? If not, call for it. All in favor, say aye. Next is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes of August 8?
I believe that we approve the minutes as amended. I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comments on any other part? Not all in favor, say aye. Next is the special call meeting, August 17. Do I hear a motion to adopt those as presented?
Tell me.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comments? If you don't, all for vote, all in favor, say aye. Next on agenda is the financial report, Leanne.
I'm still trying to kind of fill out what you guys are looking for when I do a financial update. So if you all find that what I'm giving you all, your council packets, if it's too much, if it's not enough, tell me, so I'll know what to do with you guys. I've broke down in there what was spent, what we got in, water fund, sewer fund, general fund. I did get word last week that we'll be getting our tax dis from the county probably this week, so we'll start working on tax stuff as soon as we get back. Do you have any questions?
Within the fact that there was a financial for the minutes, so please look at that.
Yes, okay. Mayor, just to clarify, toward the vacuum of financials, is where Leanne has got the information that council has requested, such as canceled donations. They're in the financials anyway, but we just kind of highlighted them a little bit so they stand out. And also, an August financial recap, revenue expenditures and whatnot is also in there. So if there's anything else that council wants to see, we have, as the mayor said, reactivated the activities report, and as you can see, since April, I think, we're at $70,000, I wouldn't say $74,000, $70,295 since April 1st. And now keep in mind, that's donations, whether it's cash donations, or whether it's man hours or material. But just for the record, you know, when somebody says that the town council of Tassle does not support the community, community growth, I can heavily argue that. Okay? It's very transparent, it's right there in your, and you know, obviously, with the growth that we're having in the town of Tassle, that's a direct reflection of it. So, but anyway, if there's anything additional that you want, as Leanne said, just let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt those financial statements as presented?
Motion.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
My second.
Any other questions? Not call for a vote, all in favor, say aye. Next on agenda is the town manager's update on the projects.
Okay, as you well know, we've got several projects underway that we're trying to do, also sensitive to events that we're having, and holidays, etc. We're still working on the sign. We feel very confident that we will finish that, this construction season. So in the next month or so, we should be complete with the Rockford Tassle sign. But other than that, Mayor, unless council has got any.
You want to mention the American Legion?
Yeah, the American Legion, we booked up the first week in October for public works. If you've been in the American Legion Hall lately, it leaves a little bit to be desired cosmetically. There's been a little bit of normal wear and tear that you'll have on public buildings that's utilized for the public, so we're going to address that area. We're going to completely, not redo the walls, but we're going to spackle the walls, fill in the holes, repaint. We're also going to put a caulk strip around the wall at a specified elevation, and it's going to be, it'll be in an aluminum frame that you purchased, so that people can stick stuff to it if they want to hang stuff on the walls. But the back wall, the western end of the building, has suffered some quite significant cosmetic loss, I guess, to put that lightly. So we're going to try to keep in mind that it is a public building, people are going to use it that way, but we're going to also make arrangements to address those activities that are in there, so we're going to paint the entire thing inside.
All right. We'll move on to the committee and conference updates, and Councilman Murray's not here, all of his brother, Chairman Warren.
Read. Susan.
Read this, please.
We had a discussion, we met yesterday. We had discussion about a potential temporary housing request that came through, and we decided we needed more information to review that request. And we also had a discussion about the chicken organs, and we tabled that till our next meeting as well.
Okay. Next is the Twin Depot Committee. Vice Mayor Barnes?
I have not received any update, but I do know that we have an August 31 deadline for bids for the Ford Park.
Yeah, we had an August 31 originally, it was extended actually to today, and in order to accommodate two contractors that I'm very much hopeful will bid, we've extended it to the 19th. So hopefully, the 19th, because this month, by the way, will actually have a bid open, and I can actually email out, unless you can remember Robert Townes, I'm bad.
2:00.
I think it's 2:00 P.M., and it'll be right here. And before we leave here tonight, if that's not correct, I'll let the council know, but if any of you want to attend that on 19th, that 2:00 bid opening, it'll be here, right here in this building. And I'm really excited, I'm really anxious, I've got a little anxiety over it. I'm excited to see him come back. Thank you.
And we'll move on to, we've already had the events, financial reports, which, from the packets, so we're on to our paid business. A donation request for the fallen warriors. See that, they came four or five months ago, and basically didn't have their numbers or 401(c)(1) stuff, so they're asking for a donation to do a, actually, a wall of fallen warriors. The names similar to the Vietnam War memorial.
Do they have their nonprofit numbers?
Yes, they got their uniform.
I've got the donation chart for you, if you have any questions.
What would be appropriate?
I'm not sure the numbers, I can tell you that the maximum that council has got is 151 to 500 is $50 to $500 donation. Anything over 501 and up, town council, it just says town council will discuss, so I'm not sure the number of people that it does. I think, I'd like to make a motion to give the fallen warriors a $1,000 donation. For the, for the, we're here, this is, it's a good country.
Have you got a motion for a $1,000 donation to the fallen warriors? Do you have a second?
A second.
Have you got a?
Can we just, can you just say 500 was the?
Anything above 501, it says town council will discuss. So if it, if it's above the 501 people, and it serves.
We'll serve the whole county, and serve our community.
Sure. Do you have a discussion on?
I'm just curious what we have left. I mean, we keep, we just kind of throw numbers off on this bench, not knowing.
Okay, that was the charge of this.
I know, so what does that mean, this budgetarily from here through June?
So our, to date, town council is at $28.50.
What's our total?
And you remember?
It's usually a good money way, but just saying here, having money, just want to make sure we have it.
And now keep in mind that this is, this is kind of convoluted, because I just want to be sure that council understands, you specifically vote on items. In other words, I'm not going to put in here.
Then you find a place to take it from the budget.
Oh, no, I have another line, I have an economic development line that we use. But if council specifically votes on it, and it's not a norm, such as a Christmas parade, that's not from, well, it is from y'all, but it's in another line. But specific things like this, if y'all vote on, it's what you'll see a reflection of at here. And to date, you're at $28.50.
I think it's $15,000.
Where's this going to be located? I think it's going to move throughout the county.
Across the county law.
Contrae Counties, Russell, Buchanan, Tappus.
Yeah, the American Legion, we booked up the first week in October for public works. If you've been in the American Legion Hall lately, it leaves a little bit to be desired cosmetically. There's been a little bit of normal wear and tear that you'll have on a public building that's utilized for the public, so we're going to address that area. We're going to completely, not redo the wall, but we're going to spackle the walls, fill in the holes, repaint. We're also going to put a caulk strip around the wall at a specified elevation, and it's going to be, it'll be in an aluminum frame that you purchased, so that people can stick stuff to it if they want to hang stuff on the walls. But the back wall, the western end of the building, has suffered some quite significant cosmetic loss, I guess, to put that lightly, so we're going to try to keep in mind that it is a public building, people are going to use it that way, but we're going to also make arrangements to address those activities that are in there, so we're going to paint the entire thing inside.
All right. We'll move on to the committee and conference updates, and Councilman Murray's not here, all of his brother, Chairman Warren.
Read this.
Susan, read this, please.
We had a discussion, well, we met yesterday, we had a discussion about a potential temporary housing request that came through, and we decided we needed more information to review that request. And we also had a discussion about the chicken ordinance, and we tabled that till our next meeting as well.
Okay. Next is the Twin Depot City Resolutions.
I have not received any update, but I do know that we have an August 31 deadline for bids. I'll defer to the pod.
Yeah, we had an August 31 originally, it was extended actually to today, and in order to accommodate two contractors that I'm very much hopeful will bid, we've extended it to the 19th, so hopefully, the 19th, because this month, by the way, will actually have a bid opening, and I can actually email out, unless you can remember Rob's time, it's about?
Two o'clock.
I think it's 2:00 P.M., and it'll be right here, and before we leave here tonight, if that's not correct, I'll let the council know, but if anyone wants to attend that on the 19th, that 2:00 bid opening will be held right here in this building, and I'm really excited, I'm really anxious, I've got a little anxiety over it, I'm excited to see him come out. Thank you.
And we'll move on to, we've already had the against financial report with the packets of, we're on to our page business, a donation request for the fallen warriors, see that they came four or five months ago, and basically didn't have their numbers for 401(c)(1) stuff, so they're asking for a donation to do a, actually a law of fallen warriors, the names similar to the Vietnam War memorial.
Do they have their nonprofit numbers?
Yes, they got their uniform.
I've got the donation chart for you, if you have any questions.
What would be appropriate?
I'm not sure the numbers, I can tell you that the maximum that council's got is 151 to 500 is $50 to $500 donation. Anything over 501 and up, town council, it just says town council will discuss, so I'm not sure the number of people that it does.
I think, I'd like to make a motion to give the fallen warriors a $1,000 donation for what they need. We're here, it's a good country.
Have you got a motion for a $1,000 donation to the fallen warriors? Do you have a second?
A second.
And go ahead.
Can we just, can you just say 500 was the?
Anything above 501, it says town council will discuss, so if it, if it's above the 501 people, then it serves.
We'll serve the whole county, we'll serve our community.
Sure. Do you have any discussion on?
I'm just curious what we have left, I mean, we keep, we just kind of throw numbers off on this bench, not knowing.
Go ahead, that was the charge of this.
I know, so what does that mean, this budgetarily from here through June?
So our today, town council is at 2850.
What's our total?
And you remember?
I found out real quick.
It's usually a good money way, but just saying here, having money, just want to make sure we have it.
Now, keep in mind that this is, this is kind of convoluted, because I just want to be sure that council understands, you specifically vote on items, in other words, I'm not going to put in here.
Then you find a place to take it from the budget.
Well, no, I have another line, I have an economic development line that we use, but if council specifically votes on it, and it's not a norm, such as a Christmas parade, that's not from, well, it is from y'all, but it's in another line, but specific things like this, if y'all vote on it, it's what you'll see a reflection of it is, and to date, you're at 2850.
I think it's 15, no. Where's this going to be located? I think it's going to move throughout the county.
The county law.
Contrae Counties, Russell, Buchanan, Tappy.
It's the first, first column and it's, nothing against.
It's good, it's for the Venice Parade, it's going to be in part of the Venice Parade and all that, you know.
I haven't discussed that yet, I just want to make sure we have the money.
You have currently $11,550 left for the rest of, till June 30.
Okay, any other questions? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Our next on the agenda is Twin Depot City Resolutions.
Okay, I'm going to go back just a little bit to bring everybody up to speed, but back in 2014, I had written a letter to D.C.R. specifically of Ms. Crump to evaluate the stretch of the Clinch River that flows.
I think you're on a different page.
We have the train station depot.
Twins, Twin Depot City Trail.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
Well, uh.
I was on a roll too.
And we're still on unfinished business.
Wrong trail.
Okay, this is about the train station, between Tassau, train station and Narrows train station, and now we get resolution for support. Whereas the Tassau County train station and Narrows train station are twin depots built in the 1920s, and whereas the route between twin, twin depot followed the Clinch River through Fort of Wolf Creek and Wolf Creek to the southwest, to the northeast direction, and whereas this route has sweeping curves, sharp turns, intersections with interstate settings at the midpoint, and intersects with Virginia 623 for diversion to God's Tompkins, First Garden, Five Halls, and west in Tassau County, and whereas this route was usually one air drive with light traffic for bicycle rides, grapefruit, food, and service on both ends, the community of Rock Gap and Rock Gap Greenway at midpointway, not a cross mountain ride, but relaxing valley drive, fantastic scenery, and the shadow of the East River, Mount alone, the entire landfill, the north of the Rich Mountain to the south, from Tassau to Rock Gap and Wolf Creek Mountain to the south, from Rock Gap to north to Narrows, which includes the entirety of Route 61, and whereas this route traverses three counties, Tassau, Land and Giles, and whereas this route passes through the communities near three high schools, Tassau, Land and Narrows, and whereas this route is a cleverly interchangeable with U.S. Route 19 and 460 near the Western Point in Tassau, dominate interchange with Interstate 77, Rock Gap, and a half cleverly interchange in the eastern with U.S. 460 in Narrows, and have therefore been resolved that the town council, on behalf of the town of Tassau, has united with the town of Narrows, Tassau County, Land County, Giles County, in supporting naming this route Twin Depot City Trail given on this date. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
I'm second.
Any discussion? We're going to call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is, I don't think it's going to be slams, okay, new business, amended home occupation permits.
Okay, I, this is just a briefly, obviously each one of you are aware of it, what I'd like to do is let you know before you vote tonight of what my intentions are to address this area. I feel like a lot of the businesses in town, people start those businesses, and due to a lack of communication maybe from the local government, they're not aware, and I feel like it falls in line with construction, building permits, funding permits, people start projects, and they're just not aware that there's a process in the locality, so I, you know, the ordinance, council very aware of the way the ordinance is written and why it's being drafted up, I think it matches what's, what's going on across the Commonwealth, we did a lot of research on it, but what I'd like to do, and what I'm going to do unless council, would like to go a different route, as Lee Anne's been requesting information to be put in the newsletter, and we'll put it also on the website, town website, and also Facebook and other, other areas of social media that we utilize, and just let people know that it's out there, and give everybody, you know, an opportunity to come in and, and address the businesses that they may own and operate out of the house. I would rather not, unless I have reason, reason due to a complaint, or somebody informing the town, and I don't mean just somebody calling and saying, don't, don't tell anybody what I just told you, you know, those calls, they get those regularly, but if somebody wants to step forward and say, I know an individual, they probably have not read the newsletter, they're out there, then we will send them a letter, and we will specifically let them know, but I would rather not go on, you know, somebody calling and say that there's a business here or there, I'd rather not go on that, I think that's a lack of professionalism, I think it's a lack of communication, and if you accuse somebody of doing something that's not legit, we deserve some recourse from that, so I think putting it in the newsletter and giving people an opportunity to come out and, and address their business licenses probably in the best interest of the town. Any questions on that method of how we're going to address this to begin with? I know there's a number of them out there, and once again, a lot of them just are not aware.
Do you still need further?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a motion to adopt these ordinance, section 23 dot 1? Do we need, do you post open or just?
Two separate ones, you have two separate votes, and you'll have, and what you'll do is you'll have, because right now at this point, you've still got to have, unless you're passing that as an emergency, and I think you need to, you're still going to have to have two readings.
Right.
So you just have the first, you can go ahead, this is the actual first reading tonight, and then the second reading will be next month.
Do we need to read this definition, sir?
You can go through, but as you know, well, if you want to bypass the reading before voting, and if you're not, we're not allowed, if you want to, you can, but it is fairly lengthy.
I know.
So if you, it depends on how the council feels, if they want to bypass the reading, but then I, you still have to have two, two appearances of the reading for purposes of passage.
Okay. Would I have a motion to bypass the reading of section 23 dot 1 first?
Some.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? We're going to call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's do.
Yeah, do it, it's got to be by all four.
Vote, call vote.
Aye.
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 Next is the section 23 dash 19, use amendment, same thing, I read that.
That one you cut through pretty quick.
Yeah, bid ordained by the council, House Council, Gina, that is hereby asked to follow amendment to the town code, section 23 dash 19, regarding, regarding permit use of residential limited R1 zone, section 23 dash 9, use amendment is 12 home occupancy, as defined, adopted by the. That's all. All right, do you have a motion to adopt that?
Some.
You have a second? You have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, we'll call.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
You still have, of course, you've got a second reading.
Yeah. Okay. Hey, next on the agenda is the proposed hotel parking garage.
Okay, just to give you a little bit of an update, each one of you know, we received a grant from DHCV, and Rob will go over it in detail just a second, but that, that grant requires several steps that we need to do in order to receive those funds for the planning part of the hotel, and one of the areas that we need to address was either a public hearing or an open forum meeting, which we're in right now, but we need to recap, just one, we need to leave very specific communication, there's a group that needs to be set up called Spark, Spark Club Group, and Rob will go over that in detail.
Is there any question?
Rob.
Get your questions out.
Yeah, you got it, Kelly.
Okay, first step, we have to do the completion of the initial public meeting, which is what we just discussed. The town must schedule a public meeting to give citizens an overview of the proposed project. Citizens must be informed about the town's intentions to assess parking and the feasibility of constructing a parking garage within the downtown area, and to conduct a survey to confirm needs. Citizens must also be informed of potential future activities under the study, including the additional public and management team meetings, and completion of housing inspections and engineering assessments in the project area. The town must disclose that future planning grant and community improvement grant funding depends on completion of these initial activities. At this meeting, energized neighborhood leaders called Spark Clubs must be identified and included as members of the management team. The second step is the completion of an initial management team meeting. The town must identify key stakeholders and secure their commitment in serving on a project management team. The management team must include, at a minimum, the town manager or designate, a representative from the Cameron Plateau Planning District, the grant administrator, the local building official, and at least two representatives from the business community. At this initial meeting, the management team members must help the town to develop a plan for completing these initial planning grant activities. Completion of an initial assessment of parking needs and inventory of existing parking. The town must conduct a survey to assess parking needs and demand in the downtown area for the proposed parking garage. While DHCV understands that the parking garage will support the proposed hotel development, the garage will also benefit other local businesses and organizations. Please make sure to obtain information and documentation from the potential hotel developer on their parking needs. In addition, the town must survey all the businesses, organizations, any community groups or organizations that host events in the downtown area that will utilize the proposed garage. The town must analyze the results to ascertain, to ascertain the need and demand for the project, and provide a written summary of the survey results. Now, on that survey, Nathan with Tassau Today is currently, they've already seen the survey, he's collecting that right now, he's going to be going around to those businesses, and will, will help us on that. This must be a draft RFP for professional services. The town must identify the individuals or firms that may be interested in conducting a parking study, and prepare and submit a draft copy of the request for proposals to be issued. The town must not issue this RFP until it's been reviewed and approved by DHCV. Please note that only a maximum of $30,000 is available from DHCV to assist with the total planning process, including the site assessment and design that will be completed if the full funding amount approved upon our review of your documentation that will be submitted by October 28, 2017. The cost to complete a thorough planning grant will be more than what is provided by DHCV, therefore, the town should begin the process of identifying additional resources. And finally, the completion of a second management team meeting. The town must schedule a meeting of the management team wherein members can review the results of the preliminary results of the surveys to better define the project. Potential project activities and plan of action should be discussed at this meeting. Upon completion of these items, the town must submit a summary of these assessments and meeting minutes to DHCV by the October 28, 2017 deadline noted above. The responses must be submitted online using the agency's centralized application and management system, which is the CAM system. If you have any questions about how to access or use CAMs, please contact me once DHCV has received and reviewed your response detailing the results of the above steps. A determination will be made as to the viability of the proposed project and eligibility to continue the planning process. If the project is determined to be viable and eligible, DHCV will notify the town, and you will work with the assigned committee development specialists to conduct a facilitated planning strategy session with the management team of the October 28.
So, that's pretty much an overview of what's going on. I do want to let council know that there is a potential $750,000 grant from DHCV, a maximum of 750, if you come out of that, so I'm really excited about it. The project is once again still on schedule to start, break ground, third quarter of 18, unless it gets behind, but we never get behind the local government, so. Does council have any questions about?
The parking study, planning process, they're going to give you 30 grand.
Yes.
They say that person, do we know where you have that in budget or that others?
Actually, it was just a grant opportunity, and, and Jamie Oliver will be very much involved in that, if you'll recall, it was Jamie Oliver's, you know, he would come up with all that engineering anyway, this will assist his study.
Can we use his study to give to them?
Absolutely, we will, absolutely, yes, we'll work hand in hand.
So you're going to need to identify the Spark Clubs?
Um.
Don't you have the Spark?
No, I want the Spark Clubs, I need one.
Not yet, not yet, Jim Ball, one of them, will obviously be, be one, I'll be another, but we'll send out an email and communicate with council what you have, or this procedure. I want to be sure Nathan's okay, but he's, he's done a good job of obtaining this, so it's going to be a challenge if you read the emails for him to stay above water on, but we're going to help him, we'll get there.
Okay. Next on the agenda is scenic river investigation, resolution, David.
Okay, once again, in 2014, there was a letter that was drafted out of my office, it went to Ms. Crump, Ms. Crump is a deployed with, with D.C.R., and at the time, Seeger Bluff, Richlands had voted and actually had their portions of the Clinch River toured, and D.C.R. has actually got to float those from the beginning to the end, and they were preliminary, they had preliminary approval, however, there was some concern at the county level, and due to that concern, those designations never materialized. So recently, it has, it's been brought up again, and I had an opportunity Monday, Monday evening to meet with Ms. Crump, and she added a whole lot of light to some of the concerns we had, and I can assure you that water plants and, you know, other, other buildings or operations on the Clinch are not, are not prohibited with this designation, and to give you an example, there was a water plant that was actually being looked at on the stream today that has a designation, and what they wanted to do was just push the water plant back off the stream, I think it was 100, 100 foot, in other words, when people are on that stream, floating that stream, or navigating that stream, they don't necessarily have to look at that facade, that building, not to say that it's cosmetically not attractive, but they just, it's a level of communication, and, and they just desire to have that throughout the, but you've got a resolution in there, council so desires, and I'm really hoping that council will unanimously consider allowing the locality, me and my team, to go after that designation, and, you know, the, the Clinch, it's way above Long John Silver, it has to south to North Fork, but it actually merges together at that restaurant, and it goes all the way to Pisky, which is 5.6 miles of stream, and needless to say, it leaves a lot to be desired, and there's two seasons, there's two times during the year when the water is high enough to float, and then when it comes to public works, some people would say that summertime is the best time to work on the stream, but when it comes to little bugs, and snakes, and growth, and the hot, that summer's not, so, you know, to me, the best time to work on brush removals, obviously during the winter, winter months, however you have water involved here, so we're going to do everything we can to clean that 5.6 miles up, we're going to ask them for cooperation from landowners and businesses along the way, but I can personally, you know, just visualize the stream being opened up to work, you can take a kayak down, and there obviously are some places you're going to have to get out, go over some pipe, maybe some shallow water, but having launch ramps in different places, and I've actually talked to DHC, I mean, not DHC, but D.C.R. about building some, some skirts that would actually take kayaks around the dams, it's a skid system to go around the dams, so I've got in my head a, a vision, I think it'll bring quality to the area, it'll bring economy to the area, and the Clinch is already noted for not having a federal endangered species, but a state endangered species, so it already brings a lot of, a lot of schools, and, you know, to the river, so it's a, it's not going to happen overnight, once again, 5.6 miles, it's, it's quite a long ways to, to clean up, but my target is to have it to where she can at least float it, and she does have to float it before she can say yes or no, and there's a lot of other obstacles that we have, but if we don't try, we'll never get it, but just because we don't have the scenic destination if we do not qualify, does not mean that we cannot make any destination, you know, we can always do the blue one, so it is, it is a vision that I've got, and it'll take, you know, some time to do it, especially with respect to the bowling alley, if there's other products on the table, but I would encourage council to let us have this opportunity to take a shot at it.
Do you have a deferment of the agency, past mayor?
scenic river designation, whereas the Clinch River is the crown of the mountain empire, flowing southwestward from its origin near the town of Tassau. The Clinch travels some 135 miles, reaching portions of Tassau, Russell, Wise, and Scott Counties on its way to the Tennessee border. In a cast of Virginian rivers that portray history and natural wealth, the Clinch has a story and character all of its own, and whereas the Clinch River, which was named after an otherwise forgotten explorer, played a major role in the exploration and settlement of southwest Virginia, many early settlers made their homes along its shore, and whereas the Clinch River has a lot to offer those who want to escape the familiar, the familiar and explore the life of the river, and whereas the Clinch River possesses an opportunity for the town of Tassau to reinvest in our future's economy. Now, therefore being resolved, the Tassau Town Council recommends to the governor and the general assembly of the Commonwealth of Virginia to support qualifying the town of Tassau's 5.6 mile stretch of the Clinch River as an additional part of the Clinch River scenic byway. Being further resolved, the Tassau Town Council recommends the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation be designated as the administering agency, given under the hand of the mayor of this day, 12th day of September. of this day, 12th day of September, 2017.
Do I have a motion to adopt this special issue?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? If you're done, call for a vote, on the paper, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the update on the Dunford Park.
I just wanted to give Cancel a little bit of an update. As you're aware, there's portions of, help me out here, Terry, is that south, that's North Fort going through Dunford?
That's south.
South side, okay. Um, south side, the Clinch actually runs through Dunford Park. It, it meanders through there, and it allows a high aquatic life in there. However, the maintenance of it leaves a little bit to be desired because of the potential erosion in the curves. Um, we have been successful to obtain a grant. The grant is a program that's not only administered by DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, but it's also administered by DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, and also the Virginia Department of Game and Island Fisheries. It's close to $100,000 that they're wanting to put into Dunford Park. If you'll look at what's, what's attached, there's permission that needs to be given for them to execute the plan. In the second page of there, they're going to install what they call root laths in, in curves of the creek, which will help retain some of the erosion. Another process that we have to do, there's, there's three properties that border the eastern end, well, southern side of the, of, of the stream, that Lieutenant is actually working on right now to get property owner's permission, and they actually met last week with DCR. So, I'm really excited about the opportunity to retain it. As each of you know, it was recognized by the Virginia Department of Game and Island Fisheries last year as a state trout children's trout stock and stream. Just wanted to give kind of an update on what's going on.
Can I tell you about seventh grade, or is it a field trip, or is it a science class this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And September 30th is?
Fish Day.
Fish Day for the school. Okay. Uh, thank you, Todd, for that update. Uh, next on me is Dominion Energy Virginia Community Meeting. If you see that in the paper in the last few days, Dominion Energy is wanting to do a hybrid electric plant, and the county is one of the sites that they have selected. Basically, they think the site is where the proposed windmill was going to be at one time, and one of the good things is, part of that is the town of Tassel actually owns some property in that area, and I thought, uh, talk about that.
Yeah, but actually, I'm not going to be redundant, of course, if you saw it and read about it, but we do own some property out toward Grady, just before you get to where you turn off to go to the birth garden, well, actually, after you turn off to go to the birth garden, right on the left, we own a quite significant amount of property up there. I do not know the history of it, of all that property, and how we become owner of that property, but it also has a water source that runs gravity, by the way, from there all the way to our water treatment plant. Now, not our water, Boston PSA, but it is located in the town of Tassel. So, it has a gravity stream that runs from there all the way into town, but we do own a significant amount of property up there that they will be looking at in the future, obviously. I think the letter's pretty aggressive, they tell you they'll keep you updated. So, it's almost as if they've already, you know, got the permission to proceed forward.
The county provided it in the first instance.
But I'll also, I'll also, the next couple of months, be communicating with individuals that cruise timber, and we'll be evaluating the quality of timber that's on that land. Uh, I'm not sure if it's a mature tree in there. I don't want to lose the opportunity to capitalize on that timber if the time is right, so over the next couple of months, we will be looking at that.
We need a vote on that, Todd, or not?
Uh, no, no vote, it's just an update, just an update for the?
Um, cruise property.
I'm sorry?
Uh, to the crews.
Um, okay, yeah, give me directions to proceed forward there, that'd be good, yeah, vote on that. The cruise property.
Cruise, basically, they do an assessment of the timber and see if it's working.
Pass someone.
Our second.
Any other discussion on that? Uh, I think it was, it has been timbered twice, that I know of.
When was the last time?
About 15 years ago.
Okay.
Call for a vote on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the Main Street and Methodist Church traffic assessment.
Okay, if we can take just 30 seconds, where you're looking at the machine cook warm up up there, and I'll dim the, dim the lights. Um, as each of you are aware, in my opinion, we are growing, and we've got another school in town, and we still continue to have parking problems, but I believe that there's good parking problems that have, it's a direct question of growth. Uh, just to get you oriented a little bit, I hope everybody can see my little cursor, so I'm going to move it big, but this is Town Hall, it's actually where we are presently. Uh, this building right here belongs to Mike Hines. Uh, this is Central, Central Avenue, it runs all the way up to Church, I mean, I'm sorry, Pine Street, it runs all the way up to Church Street. Um, Main Street is right here, we have an alleyway that actually goes down between Main Street and Pine Street. Central Avenue is located right here. Um, and that alleyway, obviously, right there. In the evenings, and also at noon, we call it pickup, I haven't found a way to address that yet, and we'll work on one thing at a time, but in the evening, there's been some congestion with traffic in this area and in front of the Presbyterian Church, and I'm not saying it's a reflection of the school, I just noticed there. Um, we also have a number of vehicles that are pulling over from the intersection of Church and Pine, and they're kind of stacking up down the road here. Right now, when vehicles are coming down Central, they try to make a right-hand turn, or if they're coming up Central, they're trying to make a left-hand turn. They're going around these parked vehicles, and needless to say, if there's a car making a left on Church, they kind of hit it on there. We have not, literally have any, any contact yet, but there have been a number of vehicles that have had it backed up, and so we've got, we've got a situation that just needs to be addressed, and for the last couple of days, maybe even a week, Lieutenant and his team have been directing traffic here. And needless to say, um, the officers directing the traffic, it is a fix, but please keep in mind that we, we do the high school, we do the middle school, and we typically have three officers working in shifts, so anything I can do to address a problem without tying up officers, at this point, anyway, I feel like it's necessary. My recommendation to, to address the school was to allow me, obviously, communicate with the church, and write a formal letter to them, and designate between hours, and I'm not in a position right now to let Cancel know what those hours are, but they will not literally be hours, they'll actually be with less than 30 minutes or less, but make this a one-way street. Now, this practice is commonly done. Um, it's on Duck Street in Bluefield, Virginia, for Dudley School, that's a one-way street between certain hours right there. So, it's not an uncommon practice. Uh, it's going to take some time for our travelers to get used to it, but we could put signage here, uh, throughout the area to let people know that there are pattern change, but designate this as a one-way street where traffic can only travel in the direction of my cursor during that 30-minute, 20-minute, 15-minute slot, and the vehicles can stack up at the Methodist Church all the way down the right-hand side. And what that would allow other vehicles to do, if they be coming down the alley, they can still turn right, or vehicles that are coming up Central can still turn left and go around those parked vehicles, because it's a one-way street. And once again, this is a common practice for congested areas through short time lengths. Uh, this is not, this is not specific to the town of Tassel in any way. Um, we would post on Church Street and just follow my cursor, but if you're coming up to Finn Castle, or you're coming, uh, you're traveling on Main and you make this turn, vehicles coming down Church Street would not be able to turn left, they would actually have to go all the way down Church Street, come up Tower, and come back around up Central. Uh, the same thing with vehicles that are coming up Church Street, they would not be able to turn right during those hours. And I think, obviously, that would keep, that would keep the traffic of moving on Church Street, that would obviously keep the traffic moving on Finn Castle, and at one time, it was actually stacking out, you know, quite a, quite a, quite a distance. So, and I talked to Lieutenant, not a whole lot about it, but they are actually, right now, they have an officer here when they can. I noticed for the last couple of days, they even have an officer here. But I think that would address the parking issues to the best of our ability during that 30-minute slot. So, is there going to be some uncomfort? Absolutely. Um, is it going to be hard to get used to? No. I just, you know, after a couple, couple of weeks of traffic being detoured by the officers, people will get used to the pattern. Obviously, when people want to pick their kid up here to Methodist Church, they'll end up traveling all the way down Main, and maybe coming down Central and parking, you know, depends on where they're, where they're adding line of traffic. Um, and I think it'll solve, solve the problems. Um, we obviously are going, we're going to be sensitive to the bank, we're going to be sensitive to some of the other parking areas that may be up here, but I'm not going to sugarcoat it, I obviously, uh, obviously, there's going to be some disturbance from time to time, but I believe that once everybody realizes what's going on, they'll get used to it, um, and we'll confront, we'll confront some complaints through the office, and they'll understand it. So, I just need Cancel's vote to proceed forward with purchasing the appropriate signage. And that signage, what it's going to say is, when you're coming down Church Street here, it'll, it'll be a sign right here that'll say new traffic pattern ahead. All right, then, it'll be another sign, a given specified distance from that one that says no left turns during these hours, five days a week. Or some verbiage there.
Four.
Uh, four days a week, so there'll be some verbiage, we'll figure that out. Um, and obviously, there'll be the same thing on Church Street coming up and on Pine Street. Um, so there's, there is some capital that we need to spend on some signage, however it's not significant. We buy, we buy signs every day, we design them every day. So, you'll have that signage on Pine Street coming up, you'll have it on Church Street going down, and then Church Street coming up. Um, and it'll say, first sign, once again, I hate to be redundant, but it'll say new traffic pattern ahead, will travel a little bit of a distance, obviously, people are looking for the new traffic pattern, they'll see the sign that says no right turn during certain hours. Any questions? And I'll also be writing a letter, once again, uh, to not only the Methodist, but the Presbyterian Church, just to let them, just FYI, just good communication, let everybody in the area know that we're going to make this a one-way street.
We need to do that with all the businesses looking at this.
Sure, we can do that.
And residences, because those are residences too, I'm telling you.
We'll take the?
One of those apartments next to the bank there and back.
No, no.
It's the church.
Oh, the church.
No, the other church. It's towards us.
People were?
Church Street, Pine Street?
This is Church Street.
No, one up from Hines, doesn't somebody live there?
Necessary, any necessary business right here.
Across the street.
No.
That's the store.
Right there. It is, it is a house. Oh, are you talking about Mike Hines?
They are apartments.
You know, the last one, the very last one.
It's not.
Seventeen.
Well, what we'll do, and that's, but we'll write, we will communicate via letter to every one of those businesses and individual residents there, but obviously, we are not, uh, we can actually even put it in the newsletter going ahead, so we'll be able to communicate.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
On the letter, uh, and I know it happens at the middle school or the elementary school, you know, the kid, the people, that school out at 3:30, they ain't lined at 1:00, okay?
Right.
All right, I mean, it's just the letter to the church or whatever, it's just say, a pickup starts at 3:30, you can be in line at 20 after or 25 after or whatever, I mean, uh...
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem. What we'll do is we'll?
I'm just, I'm just trying to alleviate somebody's?
Parking there for an hour.
I've noticed for the last, last couple of days, it's not that anybody's been parked there before 3:20, so it's not been a long time now. Uh, today, myself and one of the officers went out there, and it was like 3:20, the first car pulled up to the stop sign at Pine and Church Street with the first car pulled up, so they're not staying there a long time like you at the middle school and the other places.
Yeah.
They're realizing that they're causing a kind of an inconvenience, but they're also trying to work with us to make sure it's not held up very long.
And let my people know.
Absolutely. And we'll, we'll encourage you to, obviously, let, let all the members know, and I'm sure we won't have any problems with it, it's not, it's not a problem, it's not an issue, we just need to address it. Um, and we'll proceed forward, so we have canceled, I just need directions to cancel. Now, lunchtime, at noon, is another area that we will just have to, if that ain't wait, and thinking, and speaking with Anthony, he can come up with some resolution there, and, you know, we'll cooperate with him to make it work, and we'll get there. I just need some direction to cancel and put up the new designation.
You know, if I can let school out, like, a little before noon, a little after noon?
Yes.
People that are leaving and coming to lunch that work down there, they can certainly do this.
Yeah, and that's where I call Todd, I don't know what time he closes back, what they are, they're leaving, and he's will check on the bus routes coming from the middle school and the elementary, so, or they're activated off there.
The bus, we only have like one bus that comes from here, it's like 3:15, and I think it's out of the way before any line ever shows.
Yeah, well, I know, I know the, the elementary stops on Main Street, in front of the bank.
Yeah, but on this back street, on Pine Street, it's like 3:15, so, we've been checking.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for manager and Lieutenant to proceed on the one on Pine, then the hours of pickup and drop offs.
Any other second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Did you mean that to include the signage or just?
Sir, I just, it doesn't have to, I'm going to put it up there if you vote on it.
Can any other discussion? Uh, call for a vote, on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody say aye?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, next on agenda is the Main Street event discussion.
Um, just pull it, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, I was approached a couple of weeks ago from the owner of the? I was approached a couple of weeks ago from the owner of Seven Restaurant. He wanted to have an event on Thursday nights to try to promote Main Street and people coming to Main Street to participate at the different restaurants and that sort of thing. What, what they wanted to do was hire a band, and they were willing to pay for the, the band to play, and they wanted to be able to serve alcohol. And they wanted to spread it out from each of their restaurants. When I say alcohol, I mean just beer, no wine, no liquor, anything like that. They wanted to sell at seven, then the following week, they wanted to maybe let the brewery sell, the following week, let the other restaurant sell, and that would just help increase sales for all of the, the restaurants on Main Street. Well, after some discussion with ABC, we realized that they could not do that. And it would be the town's responsibility to obtain an ABC license and purchase the alcohol from a distributor to sell, which the town would profit from that. But after some discussion with other town council members, not everyone could agree on this event because of the liability issues for a couple of things that were brought up. So we just, we're going to have an open discussion about it tonight. But since that time, the owner of Seven has decided that maybe we should just table it until the spring and try to incorporate it possibly with another event that we're having through the town and see if we can make it work, make it work then. So that's kind of where we are now. We're going to table it, work on it over the winter, everyone's going to come to an agreement, and we want to see the town grow and prosper, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. Anyone speaking, you can sign in and speak, state your name and address and limit your presentation, Dr. Green, and I don't know what we have on here, it's Tony Barnes. If you come forward and state your name and address.
If I can make it. My concern is, I've never complained in 41 years up through the town council, and this address change and street number change, it's really upset me. Because I've lived at the same place for 41 years, and all of a sudden, I get a letter saying my number is changed on my house. 911 should go around and drive up and down these streets before they make such serious changes. I know some streets are short and not numbered good, and some streets are not even named good. But our street, Payne Street, is numbered numerical and was no reason to change numbers on that street, but there's probably several streets like that. But anyway, I feel like we wasn't notified enough before this vote was made. This vote was taken for 911, is that who is doing all the changes?
911 implemented a state regulated change about 20 years ago.
The state did, to change the street names and the numbers on the houses.
No, just to have 111 addresses.
This is, our neighborhood's been in existence for 70 years, and nothing's ever been changed. And I'm very concerned that we wasn't notified enough before this vote was even taken to do this. Looked like to me, the town would have voted altogether. I'd rather seen a whole town count, and I would have went along with it, whatever the result was. But when it's just up and you get a letter one day that your house number's changed, and you have to go through all this DMV, insurances, your title to your house and everything else, I mean, that's all I, I'm expressing my concern. It might be a little bit too late, but I'm expressing it anyway.
We did have a public hearing on the, on the address changes a couple of times.
Thank you.
You want, Chris, you want to explain how the network can share?
Uh, yes. I was looking at the map.
Good.
I see that Payne Street was not one of the problems in town. There was a lot of streets in town that was a problem, but for, the whole town would be on the same 911 format, everybody has to be in common sense. I'll, I'll number on the left, even number on the right, and your number is based on your footage from.
That's where our street is.
The whole system is sequential.
Our street is odd and even, numerical order. And there's probably several streets like that. Are you representing 911?
No, I'm your mayor.
Mayor, what we can do is, we can catch up with our neighbor in the mall, we can actually go down and see him, and we can explain to him how it took place. That doesn't make it right, I understand that we're the world worth to communicate now a little bit.
Well, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Some people did get their change, and that's odd, have come, some did, some did.
I have found that some people did not get that, which I'm addressing that. Everybody has not had the evidence, any contact. I found two today that did not get that. There were only probably eight people in the town that had the correct house number before the change.
That's odd. Okay.
Before we go to the executive session, we'll, a couple of comments. We get, but after the last meeting, Senator Warner was in town, and it was a good meeting, he got to Main Street and came over and took some answers, some questions on sort of home thing. He put out a little newsletter blurb, and I'll read, read this blurb here, a little bit funny. He was talking about the state of Virginia, and it's not that the Texas gives us much hope. Small town after small town that I visited, I saw a renaissance on the Main Street. When I visited the Main Street in Tassau, there was a brand-new restaurant, a coffee shop, as well as a new 160-person restaurant that just about to open its doors. And, you know, he was very proud of Tassau progressing. He was actually in town 15 years ago, and he said it really had changed a whole lot of, with solution for those and how Tassau County is improving. Also, September 30th, we have kids fishing day, and please come out to that. It's on Saturday.
Bend Dunford Park.
Yes. At this time, entertaining a motion to go to the executive session, hear a person for first item matters and for certain business. Make a motion.
Oh, yeah. Make a motion to skip it.
All right, you have a break, you have a second.
Just skip it.
All the papers say aye?
Can I make a comment? I want to, I know we got a new officer, Sergeant Lamb, and Lieutenant Mills, your department, and it's important, you know, you're doing a great job, okay? You hired another one that you, Matt Fields. You've got, you've got a good team. Family of four, y'all doing a great job.
Yeah, I only hired three or four too.